Yeah, wait, sorry. Thank you. I'll wait for your signal. Nice work. Okay, round two. Welcome to the August twenty four, sorry, twenty five, two thousand and twenty one Provost City Planning Commission meeting. We have three items on our agenda tonight. The commission will be taking action on the first two. The third one, after we have a public hearing here, we go to the city council for, for action. And with that being said, I'll ask everybody to rise and say the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'll go ahead next and, and do our roll call. And we'll start from a different direction this time. Start with you, Lisa Jensen.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen.
Laurie Urquiaja, no conflicts.
Dave Anderson, no conflict.
Ryan Henry, one conflict, item number one.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Ally Jones, no conflicts.
Excellent. Thank you. That being said, we'll move on to item number one. Dudley and Associates request project plan approval for office warehouse space located at thirteen seventy-four West, two hundred North in the light manufacturing zone. Mr. Larson.
Okay. All right. This is again a project plan application that staff's been working with the Colarussos family for a good part of the year. And just want to give you a little bit of a, kind of introduce this to you a little bit. This is, so what I'll do is introduce the property, explain their proposal, and then staff will give a recommendation. This property is in the Dixon neighborhood at the intersection of Independence Avenue and two hundred North. You can see that the property is currently vacant. And this, and well, I'll show you here in a second. I'll show you with this map here. You've, you've got M one zoning on this property. That is the light manufacturing zone. So uses that are, that are indicative of that zone would be things like production fulfillment, even, it even gets into things like groceries and cleaner uses like that, cleaner uses like groceries, hardware and so forth. Construction yards are, outdoor construction yards are not allowed, but they are, indoor storage is allowed on this property. So it's adjacent to residential zones on the north and the east, and then some freeway commercial zones, freeway commercial zone one and two. Freeway commercial zone one is, is a zone that is intended to be, kind of, it facilitates the development of larger parcels. It's, it feels a lot like, when I looked at it, kind of like the, 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 it feels a lot like the general commercial zone and the type of uses that it allows, but it's definitely, the zone's been written to kind of cater to the freeway location. Freeway, or freeway commercial number two is, allows, it allows for develop, a little bit smaller developments and is a buffer between the freeway commercial one zone and the gateway of the city. So a little background on the adjacent zones. So this is their proposal. The Colarussos are proposing five flex space units. Generally, they're, they're about, oh, about twelve hundred square feet each, total of about seventy-five hundred square feet, or seventy, yeah, seventy-five hundred square feet for the total project. A couple of the units, the one on the, excuse me, one on the E, the far west and the far east have mezzanine, so a little bit of upper, upper storage and office space up there. The applicant is proposing twenty-one parking spaces for the proposal. And that's, that's exactly what's required. So they're proposing a sufficient number of parking spaces. Height is, is right on there. They're, they're, they're under the, well, actually for the M one, the M one zone, the height is based on the building codes. They shouldn't run into any problems with height. Twenty-six feet is, is the height again. Give you a little bit of a, an idea of what this will look like. There's a front elevation. This one would, this is what you'll see from, from two hundred North. And the left and right elevations. And then the rear, the, the back, of course, each unit will have a big rolling door. So again, with flex space, you've got an office up front. So on the, on the south side, kind of towards two hundred North, you're going to have like a, an office area. And then on the north side, adjacent to the RM zone, which again is residential manufactured home zone, you'll have these rolling doors. This, this is a little bit of, probably a little easier to kind of get a better feel, or you get a better feel for this with, with this rendition here of the proposal. Staff feels like this is a really attractive proposal for, for the M one zone. And on that corner, we think it's going to be a great addition to the neighborhood. Here's the layout of, of the layout of, of the units. Again, mezzanine on the, the east and west units, warehousing in the back. Yeah. That is going to be south facing, actually. Yeah. Yeah, the south's right here. So two hundred North will run. Yeah. So it'll look good. So again, units. I guess this is a good time to point out that, you know, there, there are bicycle parking requirements and they've got by, long-term bicycle storage. This isn't easy to see, but they, they've got, these ones indicate locations for long-term bicycle storage, and they've got a couple of outdoor spaces as well. Got an attractive landscape design, nine site trees and, and four street trees. I, one of the, they've got a, in this corner, they have a, an enclosure for their trash container, and they'll, they'll buffer the adjacent residential zone with a, a large, a large evergreen tree. So a little bit, this is a colored plan that kind of shows some of the vegetation types, tree types. They've worked with staff with, again, this isn't, this is not a legislative issue. This is an administrative issue. So they, they've worked with staff. They've worked with public works, with power, planning, worked to meet the applicable requirements. These probably aren't too interesting to you, but they're the vegetation types. Give you a little idea of what it looks like on the ground here. I, I think it's a big improvement. You've, you've got, right now, a vacant parcel with a lot of screened fencing. This is looking westward down two thou, two hundred North. This is looking eastward, kind of the opposite direction where we were looking. And you can see the, the proximity of the townhome complex. We, we think this is a really good transitional use from the kind of heavier commercial and light industrial type uses that are in the area. I mean, I know it's freeway commercial, but some of those uses look more like a, kind of a lighter industrial use. So this is a good transitional use between the, the residential zones, we feel. This is looking up Independence Avenue, kind of along the, the, the west side of the development. And this is looking east across the, the property. So the existing vegetation will be removed and, and a new landscape plan will be executed. And we're grateful to be able to work with that, with the applicants. They've, we feel like they've put together a good application here. This is looking southward, across, looking southward at some of the uses in the freeway, commercial one zone. We, again, kind of feel like they almost kind of have more of an appearance of like a light manufacturing zone. This is, maybe helps you get a little idea of what the, what the separation looks like, or what the boundary between the townhome complex and the, and this development looks like. You've, you've got a, I don't know, pretty decent separation from the, the buildings themselves and the townhome complex. One thing I haven't mentioned that I think is a really good thing for, for this development, they're, the applicant's proposing to put a, a masonry wall along the east boundary and the north boundary between, between the residential zones. So that is, the proposal, staff, again, is, you know, happy about this proposal. We feel like it's a benefit to the Dixon neighborhood and the area. Feel like it's a good transition from the indu, the industrial and commercial uses to the residential uses. And staff would recommend to the planning commission that they approve the, this proposed project plan. Yes. This is flex space, so they, they'll, they'll rent, I assume they'll rent these out to different individuals, and they, these can be used for whatever uses are permitted or conditionally permitted in the M one zone. The M one zone does allow for repair services, so it is a possibility that it could be used for some type of car-related repair service.
Commissioner Urquiaja?
Just a question on the, basically, the tree, trees around the parking lot. Does that meet the city standard is my only question. We, the newly adopted requirements for shade coverage.
Yeah, that's the fifty percent coverage.
After, you know, what, twenty years or whatever it was?
Right, right. One of the challenges we had here was we, on the north property, you've got, on the north property, you have setback requirements. So you, you've got these perimeter setback requirements that come into play when you have a setback, and that there's no north setback in the, in the M one zone. So that kind of kicks out, that kicks out any perimeter landscaping requirements there. The, the other thing that, on the east, was you've got this conflicting, you've got a requirement, they actually had a twenty-foot setback, a twenty-foot landscape yard requirement, but then they also have a, a wall requirement. And so like, they go have a twenty-foot landscape, twenty-foot landscape yard requirement, and then you put a masonry wall on it, and then it's like, what, what benefit does it do? That, so that's, that's kind of why you're seeing some reduction of trees there.
But the city's okay with that?
The, the staff's reviewed it, and we, we're satisfied with the, with the requirement. We're satisfied with that. We're satisfied with knowing that, hey, you're going to have a wall or landscape yard. We think a masonry wall is, is a good benefit to, it, it is, is, is acceptable when you've got two requirements with like, if they're going to give us a masonry wall, we're, we're good to, to forego the, the twenty-foot landscape yard. That's not even going to be seen by the, by the people that it was supposed to benefit. There is a vinyl fence, but they're also required to put a masonry wall there, so.
So will they be replacing the vinyl or just going next to it?
Yeah, that, that's a good question. I guess they'll have to work that out with the, the property owner to the east. I, I haven't been made privy to those requirements. Or to those, to those arrangements with the property owner to the east. One thing I would say, on, with, things get tight here with their parking. Staff would like to have seen some additional trees on the, on the east side there. I know that gets tight for them. I, I think that, truthfully, that, I think that they could add some additional trees along that eastern side to help with that concern with the, with the parking, with the parking shade trees.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, are there any hours of operation restrictions for the M one zone?
Not that I'm aware of. I looked through the M one zone this, before we came to this meeting, and I don't recall seeing any hours of operation. And, and again, this is not a conditional use. So there's, this isn't a situation where you're imposing, you know, conditions upon this application. Yeah, I'm not aware of any hours of operation requirements or restrictions.
Yeah, I'm just going to say, I like everything about this, but boy, excuse me, trees along the east boundary line in particular, I think that is a big deal. And I think it's kind of a tough environment as well to maybe expect trees to thrive in. You mentioned a twenty-foot landscape yard requirement.
Right.
What exactly is that adjacent to?
It's, what it is, it's a twenty, yes, I believe it's a, it's a twenty-foot, if they were, were not adjacent to residential, I, I think it would be a lesser, no setback requirement, but because they're next to the residential zone, it does kick in a twenty-foot, twenty-foot setback. And then when you, when you do that, when you kick in the twenty-foot setback, and then it kicks in some additional landscaping requirements. So then you've got that, but then you also, when you're next to a residential zone, it kicks in the requirement for a masonry or other type of wall. So we, we've got this kind of conflict, and, and staff felt that it was sufficient for them to produce, or provide a masonry wall and move the, the landscape yard, to provide one or the other, not both.
Okay. And I'll mention this now in case applicants here, and we want to talk about it, kind of as part of that trade-off, accommodating somehow some additional trees on that east property line, I think would make me feel just, I mean, that, that's really the only suggestion that I have.
I, I agree with you there. I think that some additional trees, and if it were possible, we, we had talked about trying to fit in some shrubbery, because they, they should install some shrubbery along that, that boundary. It gets pretty tight trying to put that in there, but some additional vegetation would certainly be a benefit.
Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant with us here tonight? I don't know. Do you guys have anything to add, or? Do you mind coming up for us?
I think that on the other side of their walkway, they have trees also lined up there. And so if we do too many big trees, then I drove there today and I saw trees.
Can you state your name for us?
Jean Colarussos, Trent Colarussos.
Got it. Thanks.
This is only, what, about ten to fifteen feet of, there, there could be trees a little farther to the east of this, but this was focused on the fence, so.
But incidentally.
Yeah, I went and counted trees today. Now I can't remember.
Personally, I don't think too many big trees between these two uses would be a bad thing. That's, that's my thought.
Yeah, we, we've got a pretty good relationship with those guys right next to us, and maybe we could do something, because one of our, our concerns is, and, and we, we worked it out with Brandon and, and everyone with the city is, is the parking, because originally we actually had where we'd do curb and gutter two feet, and then still also have the masonry wall. And then they kind of gave us the awesome variance of like, hey, you do the variance wall, we'll, we'll keep the two feet, because I was worried about the parking stalls getting too small with it being, you know, because I could see some of, of these occupations going in here, being in the construction field, like I have an electrician that's interested in having storage there. And a lot of these guys drive the bigger trucks. So my worry was like, you know, the parking, I just don't want that to become an issue. So we, we got those parking, or the diamonds in there for the trees. And another thing with the masonry wall, maybe, maybe it's something too, we could work out with, with our neighbor, like, hey, if, if we can maybe substitute that vinyl fence for the new masonry wall, and then add some trees, you know, we're happy to even provide them on the opposite side where it maybe help cover some of our stuff. Maybe we could work something out like that with our neighbors, just so we could kind of try it out to get too many more diamonds in there, just because my worry again is just making it to where, ugh, the parking lot is, is, is a rough go, but that's my only concern. It's just, I don't like those when I deal with them in grocery stores, when I have my big truck. So I'm just worried about that happening in a tighter space.
Knudsen's in the house. Sorry.
Love those guys.
Okay, thank you. Anything else that you guys want to add, or somebody have any questions for the applicants?
Um, do you have any idea of what planned uses you expect to occupy these? Like, do you have a, a dream occupation?
Yeah, we're hoping to get like, we're hoping to get like small businesses in there. So like electricians, I know like a doormaker was looking for a place like that. There aren't a lot of small warehouse spaces available that we've been looking at. At our last planning meeting, I, I know Dave Stewell is looking for something like this, you know, small businesses like that where they need to have shipping access, because we're really close to the freeway, but also a nice like office, but not, not really customers coming in, more just like shipping out.
Okay.
Stuff like that.
That would be compatible hours for a neighborhood adjacent to them and whatever.
Yeah.
Do you think if, if it doesn't work out for you to cut a deal about trees on the opposite side of the fence, that you could shave off maybe some of the linear space of some of those bigger units so that you had more parking lot space to do what you need to do with the landscaping?
No.
I mean, I know you don't want to, but like, is there a reason that some of them are bigger? Like, what is the, what is the purpose for the, the width that they are? Because some of them are smaller and some of them are bigger. So I was just wondering if you could make the bigger ones a little smaller so that there was more room to do what we're suggesting.
Yeah, well, the, the idea is, I mean, the two.
Yeah, well, the idea is, I mean, the two on the outsides, I mean, the idea of working with our architect, those are gonna be the prime locations, probably our best renters. And ultimately, we don't want to change the footprint of the building. We want to keep that as big as possible for making the, I guess, ultimately making the project's cash flow.
Okay. I just didn't know if it would really affect the usability of the space if it was a foot or two, if each of them were a foot narrow or that would give you a two-foot planter strip or wall or something, it would make up some of the room. That's all I was asking.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, and I think you guys asked, we're planning on replacing the vinyl fence. And so I've already gone to a couple of their meetings with that whole complex. And I talked to their property manager and they'd prefer that.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, just, I realize the zone doesn't have a restriction on hours of operation, but just in light of the neighborhood that you're in, when you're leasing these units out, are you giving any thought to including those types of things in your lease?
Yeah, I don't see anything like, if it is something where like a door manufacturer was in there, like the guys that I use now, they're usually not in there past six o'clock, so we'll probably have some kind of noise curfew where, I mean, they could be in the office after hours, but they're not milling anything in the warehouse or something past like six.
And the HOA, they have a sound curfew too. So the one closest would have to respect that sound curfew.
Okay, great.
Well, I mean, we talked about it anyway. I guess we don't have to, but we had talked about the kind of people that would go in there. And we also live kind of in that area too, so.
Want to be good neighbors, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate that.
Provos.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Also note that the city, you know, has noise ordinances as well that would be applicable here, so.
Noise from dance studios and things like that that you see lots of times here. I can see that being a major offender well into the night. Not kidding.
We only have boys, so we don't know this dance world.
Gotcha. Okay, anything else for the applicants? Okay, it's great. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go ahead and go into the public hearing. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak to the first item? If there is, please come on up. Please state your name and we'll ask you to keep your comments to three minutes.
My name is Sam Olman and I, this is an ideal M1 plan. And I commend the idea of putting up masonry walls. They're really good for neighbors. And you have to keep your trucks from running into them. But it's obvious to me, you'd gain a lot of space if it was a one-way drive around the building and maybe even slightly angled parking. The concern's about, oh, it's kind of tight, it is kind of tight. But if it was one way, you'd have another eight feet and/or something like that. But if you need a praise from somebody who lives next to an M1 zone, I give it to you.
Wonderful, thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak to the first item? See a big crowd, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn the discussion back to the commission. Mister, is any discussion?
I actually think this is a really great use of this property. I would like to see more shade simply because of the heat island effect that happens when we've got too much pavement. So that's the purpose for having more trees if there's, but that's, everything else about it looks awesome. And I do kind of like the one-way drive and don't know if you've thought of that and whether or not it would make sense, but something to maybe consider. But in general, this seems like a really good use of this land.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I, I'm not thrilled exactly with its zoning, but what you've done with the property as far as the elevations go, it's beautiful. And I'm glad you put some effort into it because just in light of the proximity of residential on each side. And then of course with the landscaping on the corner, Independence Avenue is kind of, Independence Parkway, was it?
Avenue.
Avenue. It's a pretty, fairly trafficked street and so to have something that looks aesthetically good and with the landscaping on the corner, I think it's, I commend you guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Jensen?
I just wanted a second that I would rather see a row of tall trees on the east side than a masonry wall any day. So I don't know that we have, I don't want to stop the project on account of that, but I would love to know that that was gonna happen, both for shade and for a buffer, a visual buffer from the neighborhood. I think that would be a, with the suggestion of a one-way driveway. And I think there's wiggle room. I think that's very doable and that it doesn't have to be on the other side of the fence to make it happen, so. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else? So I'm gonna try to be real succinct. Trees, east side, same comment. In my mind, trees thirty feet or closer together, if it's the right kind of tree, does help over time. And it'll be years before they really do much to make your use necessarily maybe a better neighbor to the townhomes. So that, as I see it, there's a couple more of those diamonds with the right kind of tree there that would would work in that environment. And I would not be inclined at all though to back off of the importance of having a masonry wall. I think a vinyl fence in that kind of setting, particularly where the curb's gonna be at least close to the wall or fence, I don't think that works well over time. So the masonry wall, I really think is important and if maybe staff could work with the applicant to come up with a way to fit additional trees on this side of the property line. I think that works. I'm really sensitive to the need, I think, for every parking space that you have here. Of course, that depends on what kind of tenants you have. You have one automotive repair shop there and everything's broken, like just nothing works for any of the tenants at that point, I think. So I think that's left to you guys to manage and that kind of thing, and I think we'll probably get it right. But those are my comments. Again, I appreciate what Mr. Gonzalez said. Surely in light of the zoning, I think it's a great, great project for a property. I think that'll be much better when this is done than it is now, so. There's gotta be a way, right? Where there's a will. If we only knew a landscape architect that could help us come up with.
You missed Commissioner Jensen. She suggested planters on top of your wall.
If there are no more questions, comments or anything, then certainly.
I'll make a motion. Is that what you're hitting at?
Commissioner Urquaga gets a break tonight, I guess.
I know, I'm gonna jump in so she doesn't have to. I would like to make a motion that we approve item number one. Dudley and Associates requests project plan approval for office warehouse space located at thirteen seventy-four West, two hundred North and the light manufacturing M1 zone.
Thank you, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. That was Commissioner Knutson, seconding Commissioner Jensen's motion to approve item number one, I'll just say. Any discussion on the motion? Any conditions that you'd consider imposing? Like, I might have missed it. Did you say anything about additional trees?
I didn't. I didn't know if that needs to be a condition or if that's just something the staff will make sure happens because it's technically required by code.
I think if the commission would like to see something specific done, it would probably be good to spell that out.
Okay, with the condition that there are, there's an increase in the number of trees on the east side, sizable trees on the east side.
Okay. Have an amendment to the motion. Commissioner Knutson, are you comfortable with that?
Second.
Okay, second on the amendment. Any discussion on that motion? Minimum number, you said more. How comfortable would you be with going from?
I think if, it looks like right now there's one on the front corner and then another one, a small one in that diamond, I would say two more large ones on the side.
Okay.
Is that still?
Comfortable with that, Commissioner Knutson? So motion to recommend, sorry, motion to approve item number one with the
Oh, no, I'm just thinking.
With the condition that the applicant add two more sizable, I think is the word that was used.
Like, I would be fine with the one that's shown there in the diamond to not be there and just replace it with two more further to the north of the corner.
Okay.
Because it looks like that one on the, it looks like there's one on the corner. So I would like two more along the parking, the parking spot area.
For a total of three.
For a total of three on the east side.
Thank you. That's how I interpreted it.
On the east side, there's three? Is there one by the dumpster? Is that what that square, okay. Okay, so I would, let me amend this for the fourth time. I would say get rid of the small diamond, move it a little more centered and just put one more tree there in the center of those parking spots. So a total of three on the east side. Three large trees should give you more coverage.
And I'm actually hearing three deciduous trees plus the tree near the dumpster. That's what I think you're saying.
Isn't the tree near the dumpster also a deciduous tree? An evergreen tree? I would be comfortable with the evergreen plus two deciduous trees on the east side. Do we want to make it three?
Plus the one that's on the corner.
I'm including that in the east side. So I'm saying, replace the small diamond with a big tree, because it looks like it's just a small little guy with its canopy drawn in the way it is. Am I reading that correctly?
Let's.
Because it's a small diamond is probably not something that.
It's not as small as it appears. I looked, I can show you on the schedule.
Like a Japanese alcova?
Yeah, it's the canopy on that, it's like it's.
Fifteen feet. The height's there, but the diameter's only fifteen. I would like to see something, either two of those, two small ones along there or one big one, so that there's more coverage over those spots and a greater screen for the, between there and the neighborhood. All right, I'm gonna go for it one more time now that I know what everything is. My motion condition is that the evergreen by the dumpster is fantastic. The large one in the front right corner, the southeast corner is fantastic. And so I would be happy with one more large diameter tree in the middle of those two or adding an additional small diameter tree to the one that you already had pictured. So a total of two big, two small or three big along the east side. How did I do? I mean, I made a mess of it, but like when it's all said and done, did we get what we thought was best for it? Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Knutson?
Still second.
Great. We have a motion and a second. I appreciate the clarity that we got on that motion. I'm not gonna restate it because it was so clear. Any, any other discussion? Okay, we will start, we will start with Commissioner Jones then, this time.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Mr. Henry?
He's not voting.
You have a conflict?
Yeah, do I vote present? I'm not sure.
You can abstain.
I'll abstain.
Okay, great. I vote aye. Mr. Urquaga?
I vote aye.
Mr. Knutson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Jensen?
Aye.
Great. Motion carries unanimous with one abstention and we'll move on to item number, well, items two and three. Yep, thank you. Chris and Karen Nutgen? Knutgen, thank you. Request project plan approval for a four-town home, excuse me, for four-town home units located at one fifty-two east, five hundred south. Project plan approval is contingent on a zone change from residential conservation to low-density residential. That's item number two. Item number three, same applicant requests a zone change from residential conservation to low-density residential to allow for the four-town home unit building. Once again, I'm sorry, once again, Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Chair. So we have a small, small townhome complex here. This one is roughly five blocks to the west of one that you saw in, I believe it was around the, I think it was the first meeting in June. So same street, just about five blocks west. Incidentally, that one, you recommended approval for fifteen. It was reduced to twelve by the city council, so. That project was on point eight acres, so you had twelve, ended up having twelve units on point eight acres. This is a request for four units on point four acres, so. So this is the subject property on Fifth South and one hundred and fifty, about one fifty east. Let me show you the zoning here in the area. So again, the property's in our residential conservation zone. And its neighbors on the east and west, at least on the north half of the property are also in the RC zone. And then it's wrapped around on the kind of southwest and southeast by the M1 zone with kind of a commercial and some R1 six A accessory apartment zoning not too far off. So what they're asking for here is the LDR zone, the development that I referenced earlier, five blocks to the east, they asked for MDR zoning, so. The LDR, the LDR zone, you can have one family, one family develop, one family homes and then also twin, twin homes are kind of the exception. You can have one family attached, one family detached, and then two family homes duplexes, so. This is the zoning request and there is no other contiguous LDR zoning. So when I was evaluating this application, I went and talked to Gary McGinn to get some historical context for this RC zone. The RC zone, if you read the intent, the purpose and intent, it's to save, it's to preserve housing. And we've had some neighbor comments saying, hey, that's the intent of the zone is to save housing and we want you to to save housing and not add more housing in this area. So for some historical context that I think helps in the consideration of this a little bit, Gary told me that in the seventies, the city was desirous to kind of see some additional housing in the city. There was a, they felt there was a need, kind of maybe similar to our time here. So they created some new zones. They created R3, R4, R5. I'm not sure about the R2 zone. So they created these zones and they went and rezoned big swaths of the city to these R3, R4 and R5 zones. And the thought there was, okay, we're gonna have some, what they really were hoping for was some new developments, even new apartment complexes. The thought was that developers would come in and buy these now rezoned, single-family lots and consolidate them and build newer developments. And it didn't happen. What you ended up with was a hodgepodge of single-family homes. People even, you know, a single-family, an owner of a single-family lot said, oh, I can have four houses on this lot now. So they started dividing up their lots and you got this big hodgepodge of development. And so in two thousand and two, the city went rezoned these big swaths to the RC zone to freeze the uses. Anything that, in the RC zone, the legal use of a property is whatever was the legal use on April second, two thousand and two. And so that, it's kind of an interesting zone. And so the thought was is that this is a, now the RC zone is a holding zone, and if somebody wants to change the zoning, rather than have big swaths rezoned, people should come in, you know, kind of piece by piece or lot by lot, so the city council can get a look at them individually. And so that's. that's really what we've got going on here. We've got a, uh, one lot that, uh, wants to, to be rezoned and redeveloped, uh, instead of having one single family home, they, they want to have four single, uh, step, instead of one single family detached home, they want, uh, four single family attached homes. So, um, here's their, their, um, kind of the layout, their site plan. What they're proposing is four units. Um, each one of these units, uh, some thought this, that this could be like an inset parking spot and it's not, it's actually, and I'll show you later. But those are actually one car garages. So, um, on this, uh, site plan, you're, you're seeing four twelve or twelve parking spaces or three parking spaces per unit. Um, and that's a big deal. Uh, one of the things that the neighbors have, at least one neighbor has expressed is, uh, okay, um, we, we've got a parking problem on this street. We've got a lot of, uh, on-street parking happening and you're going to bring in four more houses on a point four acre lot and that's going to create a parking problem. Well, I think that the applicant's done a, a good job of kind of alleviate alleviating that concern. They're providing parking at a single family home rate rather than a multi-family home rate. Um, and so let me, uh, let me kind of show you what this, uh, development would look like or what the, uh, exterior of, of this, uh, row of town homes would look like. If this is looking on two hundred or five hundred south. Um, this is the only unit that fronts on, on, uh, five hundred south. Um, the, uh, materials here are, um, cement board, uh, and, and, uh, that's, that's the main material is a, a cement board. I think we've got some cement, or well, yeah, cement board is, is, uh, and then some rock uh, material on, on this east fit, on the, uh, western face. You can see the right elevation and the left elevation and, and you can kind of see this, this property slopes downward from the north down to the south, and you can kind of get a sense of that with that left elevation there. Um, landscape plan. Uh, the, again, with this property, they've, uh, really, uh, done a good job providing an attractive landscape plan. They've, they're proposing eleven site trees with two street trees. Um, lots of, uh, the, the landscaping is blocking the, uh, is screening the, the, the parking lot on the, the east and on, on the south. And, uh, just, just a, a really good job with this landscape plan here. Um, here's the materials board that was shown to the design, the, uh, design review committee. You can see the color of the cement board material right there. It's kind of a grayish color, uh, the rock material there. Um, the design review committee approved this application. Their only recommendation was that they add some larger windows on this north facing facade. That, that was a recommendation. So, um, the floor layout of, of these four units is pretty traditional. You've got a one car garage with, uh, living area down on the bottom, no bedrooms. Uh, living area, kitchen, bathroom, and then upstairs you've got three bedrooms with a couple of baths. Uh, for the, each one of these units appears to have roughly a square footage of about sixteen hundred and fifty square feet. And here, um, here's, uh, some pictures of, of the, uh, property and kind of the vicinity. So this is subject property. Again, uh, looking down there, it's not too obvious from here, but that again, that land really slopes down to the south pretty good. Um, this is kind of looking on the other side of the driveway there. Uh, this is looking, uh, eastward up five hundred south and you can kind of see some of the parking that occurs. I think it's more pronounced on the other side. Um, I, uh, got home or got back to my desk and realized I hadn't taken any pictures of across the street. And so these are Google photos, but they, they don't really. When I, what I saw, uh, when I was there was, I, I believe a lot more cars on that, uh, north side of five hundred south. So there, there did appear to be a, a, a parking issue when I was there. But, uh, we feel like the applicant's done a good job. So a couple of things as far as parking goes. Um, this development here is called, um, Green Pine condominiums. Um, as far as I could tell, there, there appeared to be twenty-two units and roughly thirty-eight parking spaces. And so that, that looks like there's roughly one point seven five or one and three quarter parking spaces per unit. I did find, uh, uh, zone verification letter. Occasionally people come to our office and want to know what the legal use of the property is. And when they ask that, we also tell them the parking spaces they have. And we did a zone compliance letter on one of these units and they were told they only had one parking space. So I, I, I surfed around trying to find more information on this development and I couldn't. All I can tell you is that there were thirty-eight. There, there appear to be thirty-eight parking spaces, but at least one owner was told they only had one parking space. So not sure how that all plays out. But, but there appears to be a, a little bit of a parking issue. Um, this unit, I don't think it shows up too well, but the unit that's just off the screen here, it's a fourplex and, uh, another, I checked the zoning verification letter on that, uh, dwelling, uh, four unit dwelling and it only had four parking spaces for four dwelling units. So one, one space per unit. So, uh, again, I just kind of underscoring the point that this, uh, development really has done a great job with parking. Um, this, uh, this is kind of looking, um, on the other side, on the, looking west across the east side of the block, this area right here. The, again, that, that, uh, the subject property is seventy-five feet wide. And then two hundred and, I think it's two hundred and thirty feet deep. So, um, these trees are, are roughly kind of in the backyard area of, of the development. And these, uh, these trees kind of tell you roughly where the backyard of this, uh, of the, the subject property is. It butts up against this. This is a Christian oil prop.
Christiansen.
Christian oil, Christiansen Oil Property. And the last picture was a tow yard. And then, um, you, on, on this side, looking, uh, west across the property, again, the, the same trees we keep looking at, they're right there. You've got a heating and air, uh, plumbing and heating, uh, kind of, uh, construction yard there. So, um, we feel like this is a, a good, uh, really good, uh, project. It's a good transition, transitional use from uh, industrial and kind of heavy commercial uses to, uh, residential uses. The, uh, this is in the Mazer neighborhood and the Mazer neighborhood has a, a, there's a plan for the Mazer neighborhood. Mazer neighborhood calls for single family, uh, single family, um, development on this subject property. Um, and that's, this is the Mazer neighborhood plan. The subject property is right. Uh, let's see, am I right? Uh, yes, it's right there. And, uh, so you can see the yellow corresponds with single family. And on that, um, one, a, a town home, we consider to one family attached how a dwelling unit. You can see the definition from the code right there. One family attached means a family, one family dwelling attached to two or more family dwelling units by a vertical wall. And then you can see the LDR zone, which they're asking for here. It allows for one family attached and in the parentheses, they're calling it town homes. So we feel, kind of going back to this, that single family residential, uh, is that, that town homes does fit in that single family residential designation on the Mazer neighborhood plan. And this is the same stance that we took with the development that I mentioned at the first of, of the, uh, presentation here. Uh, that twelve unit proposal that was approved by the city council, we all, we took that same stance that, that it was a single family residential development. Um, some people had a question of calling this, they were calling it multi-family, multi-family. We don't feel like this meets the, uh, definition of multi-family. Because of the distinction here, we're talking about in, in one family attached, it's saying that the separation is, there, there's vertical wall separation. It's not talking about horizontal separation. But here in the multi-family, you can have vertical or horizontal separation, uh, with a multi-family type of, uh, uh, dwelling unit like they have next to the west of this project. Um, and then for some more context, uh, that, again, that, that development that I mentioned is, it sits right here. The, this portion of Mazer neighborhood that, that there's, you can see these highlighted parcels, forty-four percent of this area is single family housing. Um, and I guess, uh, we've got commercial and industrial. Um, right here, twenty-five percent. Um, we, by, based on what I just said, I think town homes could be grouped together as single family housing. There's not too many ha- town home developments in this, uh, area. Just a, a couple, uh, a few, twenty-two units here, and I think there's a handful up there. And then you've got two, uh, two plexes, uh, and there, there, I'm, I'm not sure what percentage that is, but it's, uh, it, it makes up a sizable, sizable minority proportion there. And then four plexes. Um, this is county data. They, they obviously missed one here because they, they, they call this, uh, net western neighbor a, a fourplex on their, uh, in one space and then in another, or in one spot, they call it a fourplex and then another they're, they're missing it. But, um, that's, uh, that's, uh, what I've got for you here. Staff feels like, uh, the, the rezone is, is a reasonable request. Again, single family is what they want on this, uh, is what the, the Mazer neighborhood envisions for this property. And, and they're proposing single family attached, uh, or zoning that would correspond to single family attached housing. Um, and, and, uh, they're proposing, uh, again, with that LDR zoning that they're requesting, they, they are asking for four dwelling units that frankly, we feel that it would be a great benefit to this neighborhood and, and, uh, help to, to add some, maybe be a catalyst for some revitalization in the area. We feel again, like I noted earlier, that this is a good transitional use between, uh, some industrial, commercial type uses into the, uh, industrial uses that, uh, or the, the more northern residential uses in the, in the neighborhood there. So with that, I'll invite any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for?
Yeah, uh, does the, does demolition plan, does it, does it show if there's any removal of some of those trees, those larger trees?
Yeah, it does. And maybe can I make quick one, quick note and, and I'll answer. Again, this is not a concept plan. This is a project plan. So these are final development plans. But thi- this is their final landscape plan. It's removal of all existing vegetation. And, uh, providing, uh, what we feel is a really attractive landscape plan. Uh, eleven, again, a ton of trees. They're adding thirteen trees to the vicinity, thirteen on site. So.
Thanks. Commissioner Knutson?
Christiansen Oil. Store of oil, yes.
Yep.
Put this on the block.
It is. Uh, as I understand, I think Christian, they, they have, uh, you've got Christiansen, and I think this is, this is gas pumps with a gas canopy right there. And this is also Christiansen Oil as well. Yeah.
Any other questions of staff? Perimeter fencing, perimeter wall, what, what's proposed, what's required?
Um, so as far as perimeter fencing, this isn't like the last application where they're required to have a masonry wall or anything like that. They are proposing. I think it's kind of hard to see on this site plan. But if you look close, they're proposing, uh, a fencing. Um, it's retaining walls and then also a, a, I believe it's a, a six foot fence on the. Yeah, six foot side obscuring vinyl fence atop retaining walls. And so that, that met the, the requirement for, for fencing. And I, I don't recall a specific requirement for, for fencing, but they, they have provided fencing along with, uh, the, the landscaping to help screen in certain areas of the development.
Okay. The landscape plan. Thank you. Mr. Henry, too.
Yeah. Uh, looking at this plan, I'm not seeing trash storage. Are they? Is this going to be just typical drag of the can out to the street?
Yeah, they originally did have a trash, uh, can or a dumpster.
Receptor, yeah.
Uh, in the, right, right here, actually. Um, sorry, I hope I didn't get anybody's eye, right, right there. Uh, and, uh, anyway, that, that's where the dumpster was going to go. And then, uh, we became aware that it wasn't required. There's no trash, particular trash storage required for this size of development. So we, we had them take, uh, we gave them the opportunity to take it off and they'll just have regular cans for, for this development.
And the storage of those cans?
Uh, it's, uh, not, uh, not specified. I, I don't know. Well, and I know that's been raised by, by a property owner. Um.
Cause that might, that leads to my last question. How large is the garage? Cause if they're going to store cans in the garage, can they fit the cans in a car? Or is that garage parking space just going to be storage?
Uh, that garage, um, trying to see if we can tell from. I don't think, uh, it's not, the resolution's not good enough to see, but I, I don't recall the, the exact size of that. And, and you're right, there, there is, uh, there is no, no specific place for those individual cans. I, I don't recall seeing a requirement, uh, for it to be specified on the site plan or else we would have Okay. Called it out. Uh, but yeah, we have a, a property owner and, and a member of the audience who, who I think has that same concern. So.
One last question, if you can go back to the site plan?
Yep.
In that parking, is there any standards for that corner where the, we've got two parking stalls beside each other? I know a typical parking stall is eighteen feet.
Right.
I know trucks can be as long as twenty-two feet. Is there any standard? Cause that looks really tight, given certain vehicles. And just curious if there's any standard, cause it looks like they're, they are eighteen feet deep. And if you put a nineteen foot car, you won't be able to get a car in the other stall.
Yeah, that's, uh, they are, uh, eighteen feet deep. They're required to have, uh, oh, I think it was a six foot offset, but, uh, when I, um, wish we could.
Because it's not just the sp- the stall next to each other, but as those cars back out, they're gonna, I mean, three stalls away, they're just barely getting out of that stall.
And you're right.
Room to even move back further. So I'm just curious, that's going to be an awkward parking, parking space.
You know what? I think you're right on, on that, that again, I think what happened on this one is we had a, like, a dumpster in that corner.
Right.
And which kind of changed the way I looked at that corner. And, uh, yeah, there, there should be a, a bigger offset in that corner.
Okay.
Which then cuts in potentially the landscaping as well.
Yeah, now we're cutting down landscaping.
Adjacent to the building.
That trash can was a more recent development and so.
I can't read the front setback numbers at twenty, twenty-five. Would it generally align with the adjacent homes?
Yeah, it's, it's twenty-five feet is what the, the setback is. I've.
Okay, thank you. Did I see Commissioner Jensen? Did you have? No? Did I miss anybody? I feel like I missed somebody. So.
I would like to say something. Um, I wanted to address something the neighbors said. Um, that the current use was in violation of the zoning right now. And I wanted to find out if, if that is in fact correct. And if so, is that something we consider before? I kind of feel like I'm, if, if they're in violation, if they're, they've gotten illegal rental and they're now going to knock it down so that they can make it legal, is that rewarding them for bad behavior in a sense?
They do have violations on the property. Um, I think we'd rather see this, this home's not in great shape. Um, I think we'd rather see it eliminated and have some legal uses established on the property. I think I'm more concerned about that than whether or not they get rewarded.
And the only, if my understanding of the landmarks, um, designation, you don't have to comply or save a historic property unless it's been designated a historic property, correct?
Right. It's, and it hasn't been designated.
So the fact that neighbors say, don't knock it down, it's historic, has no merit and they own the property. They can do whatever they want within the zoning.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any. Yeah, I'm not aware of any historical, you know, requirements that would require the, the preservation of that home.
Well, it definitely looks more historic than the houses adjacent to it.
Yeah.
I mean, like as far as which one I would save, I'd want to save that one, but none of them are very impressive. I didn't feel like it was a gem.
I wasn't, it looks like a cinder block box with a fancy facade on the front. I, I didn't see it as something. It's not a beautiful Victorian craftsman home that should be preserved in my mind.
I did look on Zillow and it said it was nineteen hundred, so I bet it's that red brick underneath the yellow, but at this point it, you can't take the paint off.
County records say it's eighteen ninety.
Eighteen ninety.
Yeah. The, the applicant, when we had a neighborhood meeting earlier this week. And the, the applicant explained in that meeting, and he can give more detail on this, but he says the building's a kind of a. A hodgepodge of, of additions and, and there, there's electrical. I guess like half of the buildings run off one electrical connection, the other halves run off another electrical connection. And so there's some, some really interesting issues with this home.
Like many homes in this area, Provo, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
I just want to thank you, Brandon, for giving us the history of the RC zone so we could. Appreciate that in context and also reminding us of a project similar, in a similar neighborhood so that we could kind of compare. Because this is much less dense than that other project. I also love the pictures that showed how it really does nestle back there amidst all those other manufacturing uses. So that you can appreciate that this isn't just a neighborhood that we're talking about, but also. The other side of the neighborhood that these guys are stuck with living in the middle of, and I feel like it's. If you look at the, the law, it goes back there so far that it doesn't even look like it's being used presently. Half of it is completely unused by a structure. And I feel like it doesn't really change what the neighbors see. If anything, it improves what the neighbors see. Cause it looks like a single-family home when it's done, but it's a nice single-family home. And they don't see the other three that are adjacent to it. So I appreciated having those perspectives to see that. Really nothing but improvement happens from the eyes standpoint in this neighborhood. And the traffic seems to be ameliorated by the layout, so thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? We'll invite the applicant. You helped me with name, I assume you're. Great. Anything to add?
Initially bought it, we didn't realize how many issues it, it really did have. I mean, it does. It does have two electric services. It has seven doors on the main level out. So it's, it's clearly not historical. It's been kind of scabbed together. Throughout, you know, the last century. The gas meter was inside the home next to a furnace that was the size of a VW bug. I didn't, I didn't really know what to look for when, when I bought it, but. I work in construction and so I've had. You know, builders that I work for coming and look at it and I could spend three hundred thousand dollars on it and it would still have issues. It's got foundation problems. It's, it's got roofing problems. It's got trust problems. It's, it's. This has got a lot of problems. And so, you know, this is my solution to kind of. Make the investment worth it to, to better the neighborhood and, and to be something good for my family. So, you know, I appreciate your consideration in this matter.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant?
The one thing I, maybe more of a suggestion than a question, I noticed that the west view is very blah. And that there's no landscaping along that entire west side proposed on the landscaping plan. And I just imagine being the neighbor that got to look at that massive sided wall. And wondering if there was anything we could do to heighten some of the landscaping, like literally heighten it so that it became a. Instead of just a shrub garden there, that maybe there was some, some trees to break up that long wall. We've talked a lot about how, how properties look from pedestrian standpoint. And so I think that's why the design review committee suggested having bigger windows on that front facade. But I also consider it from the neighbor's standpoint, and if there's no tree and no architectural whatever to break up the view. That's a really long building, you know, kind of a warehouse-sized building from that east side. That maybe they won't like, so.
Yeah, and so just to speak on that, you know, this is, this is my. Third or fourth set of plans, and this one's been revised quite a few times. And I have talked to the neighborhood chair. You know, they, they wanted, it was important to them to have three-bedroom units. Cause they wanted families that stayed in the neighborhood. So that, that constituted kind of the first total redesign. Cause I was trying to do two bedrooms. You know, they, they came back and they said they wanted a view from, from the north that looks like a home. The, the one issue I can see with what you're suggesting is the fire department wants a twenty-foot road in there. That if there's ever an issue. And with the setbacks on the east side, we need to have that twenty-foot access to the back if there was ever an emergency. And that does limit the planter on that west side.
Are you planning on putting fences on that east side?
Yeah, we're planning to fence the whole.
In between, no, I'm just saying like in between properties so they have their own little private yard, or is it going to be one long strip on the east side?
We don't have any doors to the back there, so we didn't, we didn't, I don't, I didn't really see that as usable, but.
So it's not actually their own little private yard barbecue space? Everything will be on the, on the west side?
Yeah, I mean, we have plants. In there, but we could.
The reason I asked about if there were going to be fences was because I really feel strongly that you need to do something to visually break up that east side facade. Maybe I'm wrong, but.
Brandon, if we look at that, the facade, she's talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
If you did, you could put something in between units two and three to make them look, you know, just kind of to visually break up. The two and three units.
Yeah, and it's hard to see from the pictures that Brandon has, but actually most of those big trees are on the east side neighbor's home.
Okay.
And, and.
So they exist, but they're not in your landscaping plan, because they're already there next door.
Yeah, and, and Lisa, just to, just to clarify, my property goes back quite a bit further than theirs. And so part of this is, is looking.
At somebody else's.
Well, mostly towards the, the tow yard.
Except the houses all seem to be on their property.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
There, there are six-foot solid side, or yeah, solid side obscuring fences on the east and west side of this property on their site plan. It's hard to see that, but it's, I have a readable copy in front of me and it, it shows it, so.
So I. I'm going to jump in if that's.
Please do. I, I just wanted to raise that as my concern for the developer that that seemed like a really big expanse, so add on.
I'm right there with her in terms of that being just, it's a flat wall.
Uh huh.
Really long, really straight. There's a little bit going on with the roof line, but not a lot. I do appreciate the idea that I think what we're seeing here is going to be partially obscured. Up six feet with a fence that. Is going to step down, I assume, as it goes along the grade. Which actually I think will make it look a little bit more interesting just from that, that aspect alone. So that's something that I've struggled with, and frankly, I kind of feel the same way the whole way around. It's, it's. There's not a lot of back and forth on the elevation, even on the, the west-facing side. But. I'm not really sure what to do about it either.
Can I clarify one thing? The, the Don Shelley property, which is the farthest one on the, the right side of the map, is just a parking lot. There's no house there.
Right.
Yeah, that. Yeah, that's a tow yard, so there isn't a house there, so, but I guess that's the parking lot.
Right.
So, okay, yeah, sorry. That building does face those homes. Okay, never mind.
It backs towards the whole.
Backs east, yeah, yeah.
Brandon, would it help if you went back to that side view? I don't know if you have that, that east side that had the trees in it. Yeah, the actual picture, I don't. That, that tree that's on the east side that the blue line kind of cuts across is on the neighbor's property.
And some of it then has to go away for you to build what you're building.
Yeah, I've actually considered talking to them about, yeah.
It's going to get chopped.
But they have quite a few trees back there. So most of the view would be up towards the first unit or second unit.
You have to remember that they might not always be there either.
Yeah.
So if we allow a big, a big long wall to be built there, gambling on the fact that their trees obscure half of it and it's not a big deal. And they decide to redevelop, then somebody else is stuck with a big long wall. So. Not that trees also are a permanent solution, they can always disappear, but I just. It's a big long wall.
Yeah, and I, on that, I guess I'm a little bit torn. The idea of doing something different with that wall, doing something different with that elevation. I think there's reason to. To want to see that changed and to see that made more interesting, but at the same time. It's not that terribly visible, you know, it, it is. So in terms of like, where do you, if you were to, to really maybe press for some architectural changes. Is that the best place to, to try to plant some upgrades? Can, can we see the north-facing elevation? I think it's mentioned before. I, I like this more after I looked at Google Earth and saw what was in the neighborhood. There are a couple of different things about this that I don't like. For example, the columns on the porch. Now, there's a little bit of kind of some ornamental stuff, top and bottom, but they're not really substantial. I, I like the cement board kind of a product quite a bit. But. I, I wonder if there's maybe room on this elevation for some other things to, to kind of dress it up. Clearly, I don't, I don't have answers. I, I would say this maybe as well about the entrances to the units. Man doors, I'd call them, you know, kind of the front doors. The treatment there for those doors isn't. Really substantial, you know, I mean, there's not like a porch kind of a, an element proposed there either. And I'm saying all of this, having gone from looking at what's along that street. And thinking that this probably is a tough place to squeeze a four-unit townhome building into. To seeing the bigger picture and buying into the idea. That the use probably, in my opinion, is not a bad fit. But for reasons that have already been talked about, I think this is a part of the community that does need. It needs quality investment. I'm not saying that where you're at is subpar at all, but. This needs a healthy shot in the arm. I think when we have an opportunity like this, we need to really get it right. Try to raise the bar for everything that goes on in, in the neighborhood. Commissioner Jensen?
I just had a thought. What if, so from the right elevation, which is the west-facing. It appears to be three houses with garages in between, like visually. What if you, on that left elevation or even on the right, what if you dressed each of the facades with a different. Color or orientation of the, of the hardy board? So that they, you know, one was horizontal, another one was vertical, or one was blue-gray, another one was gray. Just so that it, it looked like three separate houses or four separate houses instead of one big long. Is that making sense? Does someone else want to try and articulate that more clearly if I'm not doing it?
I'm hearing you say just kind of more variety.
Yeah, so that you don't actually have to change your design at all, just your facade. Just the, the materials on the facade could be varied enough that it, it appeared to be. Three separate or four separate units, because each of them had their own color and style. Or orientation of the hardy board or. Siding or whatever. Or you could plant a big giant tree right there at the highest point on the left elevation and break it up visually. Just the same in that small planter strip. It's like an eight-foot planter strip, isn't it? Or is it six?
It's pretty large. It's, there's a.
If it's a twenty-foot road, it's got to be ten, yeah? There's plenty of room to put a couple of trees along there that. If I was living there, it would be a nice amenity for me, too. You don't want to block the mountain view, because maybe they're excited about that, but. Put something in there. Just break it up so it doesn't have the appearance from another direction of being a big wall. Yeah, something narrow, but just, I'm not, and this isn't even the same as what I was worried about with the last project that you were here for. Where we were talking about shading and asphalt surface. I'm talking about visual breaking of the visual line. And that doesn't require to me a forty-foot canopy tree. It just requires a few nicely placed. Taller landscape elements that will break up the line or something that you can do with the color of the facade or both. To just break it up from one big, long, horizontal siding building with no dimensional changes. So those are a few ideas that I was thinking of as I was looking at it.
Commissioner Jensen, on the plantings, there are some incredible plantings for narrow spaces. I mean, they're, they, they just came out with a, a columnar maple that gets like two feet wide. There's also some new elderberries. One of them's black with white berries, just super cool, but they also have a lime green version. It gets two to three feet by fifteen feet. Planted between those windows. I mean, alder buckthorns are narrow plants. There's pencil. Cypress. There's also some pines that are. Trying to think. Some pencil evergreens that, you know, at the base, they might be three to four feet, but then they're very narrow, but they get twenty, thirty feet tall, tall, excuse me.
So these are very minor things that you could do by just swapping out some shrubs on your landscape plan with some taller, narrow trees. That would accomplish, I think, what we're all talking about. Yeah.
And the cost actually probably wouldn't change. You'd still get a five-gallon shrub. It may only be two to three feet, but within three years. They're up there ten, twelve feet.
Yeah, okay.
That's a very small gesture you can make to, I think, improve the visual line of that side of the house.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind your idea either of, of. Doing some different colors.
I think that might be nice for homeownership, too, instead of looking like we're all living in this big house together that, mine's the blue one. You know, when you come to see me, I'm the, I'm the red door with the blue siding. Like, it might be nice just for longevity of this is my place.
Yeah.
Mr. Jones has waited very, very patiently, but on the homeownership, this is not going to be subdivided, or is?
No, no, I, I, I think through, thinking through that, it just needs to be just one owner.
This is going to be one owner, so like this is going to be a, it's going to be a rental property.
Yeah.
Mr. Jones, thank you.
So I do love the idea of this type of housing in this neighborhood and on this property. But looking through if the ultimate goal is to have families that stay here, I just have. A lot of issues with the actual like functionality of the property. I think we've raised issues about the trash and the parking. Looking at navigating that driveway, it's very narrow, so. A family car is going to have difficulties getting in and out of that garage, you know, if we're looking at a family that's going to fill a three-bedroom house. We're not going to have like a tiny sedan. It's going to be something a bit larger. Properties three and four, you know, I can't really see any kind of sidewalk, which really limits the walkability. And also means that people are going to be walking in. What could, has the potential to be kind of a scary alleyway at night to get to and from their car, to get to and from their front door. With kids, it wouldn't be very useful, especially given that there's no sidewalk at all. Like, I just. I like the idea, but I just don't see the flow in this current plan working in a way that is. Welcoming and conducive to being active and accessing your neighborhood. So that's my biggest concern right now.
Yeah, uh, oh, go ahead. You.
Well, I just.
Don't respond to that.
Yeah, so. One of, one of, one of the issues that we've had to deal with is it's, it's quite a bit longer than it is, is wide. And so. And so. What we've really had to design around is that 20 foot. Um, access for the fire department or the ambulance. And so. Um. But we did try and include like an additional five feet in front of those garage doors so that. You actually have 25 feet to make those turns. Oh, which, which I think is pretty good for, you know, a van or an SUV or. Um. One issue will be, you know, walking. Down there. Um. And maybe, maybe we accommodate that by putting like a meandering walk on the, uh. The east side that has some, some breaks in it with some columnar trees and some stairs. That's well lit.
Yeah, I do think that would be a good idea. I was looking at it and it does feel like. Uh, like the other thing too is just there's no outdoor leisure space associated with. These different units, which again, if we're trying to contribute to density, that is still conducive to family lifestyles. Like, that's another thing that I would be worried about. So I do think that making that east space functional in some way. Be it through a sidewalk, be it through some kind of more isolated space is a really good idea. Um, but ultimately, yeah, so my main concern still remains the accessibility to and from the street and the parking safely.
Thank you, Mr. Gensales.
Yeah, I'm, I share a lot of the same concerns, some of the other commissioners of voice, and, and I'm not gonna rehash those, but um. One thing for me, I, when I think about the residential conservation, uh. You know, I realize it does allow for, for multiple units. But in, in my mind, this is, this is a project, by the way, I. Right, I feel like I could go either way on, um, as far as recommending approval or not, um. But one thing that would make a huge difference for me would be if, uh, if these were owner occupied. And with that in mind, uh, would you be willing to proffer a development agreement where there is owner occupancy?
Yeah, I would. I, I thought. I thought the city wanted it. The end answer is yes, I would. And, um.
So would that there'd be another step involved? You'd, you'd apply for a subdivision approval? That would come back at some point in the future as well. Not, it's not rigorous, that'd be relatively easy, but that's what would make it happen.
And I can't speak to the, I can't speak to the rest of the commissioners, but I, I think. With, with homeownership being a, a really high priority, um. Something would be prioritized, I think, and uh, it, it could be a, a very influential factor and. And uh, and, and my, in recommending this for approval.
Okay. Well, I would, I would be, I would be open to that. So I just, I saw potential issues with that. Um. More alongs like who, who plows the road or who? But you know, there are flag lots where the neighbors get together and they just work that out. So, um.
Um, or. Yeah, I think issues like that are relatively easy.
Yeah.
To deal with. Um. Uh, we're talking about the idea that this be subdivided.
They've provided a subdivision plat to, to divide the land, um. I'm waiting for direction on how to proceed. If he's gonna rent it, then they don't need the plat. But if, if he's gonna sell them off as individual units, then he'll need to, to use that plat, get it approved and, or execute and record.
As the building's designed now, does it have, you know, like firewalls and stuff like that that would be?
It would have to.
Yeah, it would have to.
But we, we have that, we have that as part of the plan.
Yeah, so. Um, it might be really easy now to make that, and you know, one of the challenges is that. They can subdivide it so they can be owned by different people. That's not necessarily a guarantee that they. Are owned by different people or that the owners live there, but it's, I think it's, I really appreciate, um. That as uh, something that can happen here, just creating that opportunity, I think, is huge.
Uh, I know sometimes it's easy to think, oh, well, I just, I could hand it off to a property management company and they'll take care of. All the, all the renters and all the, whatever maintenance goes on, but um. But I think the demand's high enough for owner occupied units here in, in Provo and Utah County that it, it would. Go pretty fast too.
And, and to follow up, had you anticipated retaining ownership of the, of the property or?
Well, I had, but I have been approached by like builders that I work for.
Yeah. Um, so, awesome idea.
I'm, I'm, I'm agreeable to that, you know, that just kind of separates and, and. It would have to be sloped, but. So that the cars could, yeah, but I'm fine with that.
That, that would be really good. Um. And we would love to see that develop an agreement that put all of these pieces together before you come back with the, um. The final plan, but yeah.
There is no comeback.
There's no comeback. This is it?
This is the final plan.
Okay. Okay. But yeah, um, you seem to be really willing to work with what the commission is talking about. And this seems to me like a, a really good use of this space. So I commend you for, you know, working to find something that will fit and. They still are single family homes, especially if they can be individually sold and subdivided. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions for the applicant or do you have anything to add?
No. So would we make those conditional or we need to, we would need to, well, let's, I guess.
We'll get to that, I think. And maybe before we get to that, um, we still need to take public comment.
Okay.
What it's gonna look like is I'm gonna make a motion and it's gonna be revised seven times and then you'll know exactly what you're required to do.
Okay.
That was a joke, by the way.
It's always good to be predictable though, right? That's nice. Everybody likes that. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
We'll open the public hearing. Was it Sam? Did I get that wrong with my name? Okay.
First, let me ask the applicant, are you a Provo resident?
I don't, I'm not.
That does not surprise me. Most of the people in here. For development don't live in Provo, nor does our planner, nor does its boss. Uh, you are residents. You are the only, this is the first time Provo residents. Have heard this system, except for. A very slight. Neighborhood meeting that wasn't held in person because they were afraid of. Not having masks on, and I brought the mask because there was so much fear in it. That was Monday. And there were some very good things brought up in that meeting. Of course, there. Have you, do you guys watch the meeting on, uh, online or, or on the recording, any of you?
Nope.
Have any of you visited the property? Thank you. I appreciate that and thank you. Uh, if you notice the, the pictures, now you've owned this property for about two years? Five years. The place hasn't been maintained for five years. Well, 10 years. You didn't start, but if you notice in the pictures, the garbage stacked on the back porch. There's puncher weeds all over the front, not all over. There are some puncher weeds. I fixed kids' tires in my neighborhood. You're stepping on my toes when you don't do your landscaping. Before, I think when you were owned, owned it, we had up to 15 people in there, construction people, living. In their trucks, in a trailer parked beside it, in the house. Unrelated, and I don't know who they were because I couldn't speak their language, but it was a crazy. Party all the time and they're parking on the lawn. Now, I don't know if that's when you, you owned it, but finally somebody went to the city and they talked them out of parking on the lawn and made them put lawn back in. That's the kind of management we've had in this place for the last while. Now, I've known, I've only known the house for 50 years, so I've seen people live there, raise their families there. The back area used to be a garden. As are most of the back areas of the homes in our neighborhood. This is not an unusual size. It's a little bigger. But uh. If we took every piece of property in our area that was, looked like it needed a, a fourplex in the back or duplex in the back. We could triple our population and they've tried that in the past and it didn't go over very well. Now, the parking, right now on the street, there's 20 cars parked at least. And I went out and counted them last night and night before, and just before this meeting, it's still 20 cars. I call that the Leland Gammet program. Now, maybe you know him, maybe you don't, but he's the one that decided that we didn't need parking for apartment houses. And now we have to get a permit to park on the street in several areas of this city because of that attitude. There is, and, and when you say, oh, we have four units, we want four families in there. Legally, each of those units could have three unrelated people living there. That's what our zone says. Is that accurate, Steph? In this zone, you can have three unrelated people in each living unit? Two unrelated?
Excuse me, it's three, three unrelated.
And so you have three unrelated people. And each of them have a spouse. You could actually have six people for apartments. Now, do any of you not have a car?
No.
You what?
And you can have the family and two individual, unrelated individuals.
How many people is he counting here? It's hard to tell because we went from a, what I used to think was a fourplex into a. Single family dwelling. This is not a single family unit. Across the street, there's some condos that are individually owned and they are single family. It was very easy to call a house next door a fourplex and it's actually two house, two buildings. But at any rate, I disagree with the idea of this is a single family dwelling. There, we have taken the whole description of a fourplex, a duplex. If, if you have a duplex, is, is it a two family, single family? We really, there's something wrong with my brain if I'm trying to get the English out of this. So we, we don't have any, there is almost no parking on the street tonight. And you have, uh, it looks like enough parking. Except, does anybody have a garage that they park in? Congratulations, you are exceptional. Is it a single car garage? No. You have two cars in your garage? Well, I'm gonna pay you for coffee for a week just for that. My garage hasn't seen a car since. Well, I can't, I'm, I'm not gonna go there, but.
Does a carport count? Because I have three in a carport.
Well, we'll see. But the other thing is, this idea of the zone that it currently is. Conservation zone, when we fought for that 20 years ago, and I was alive then. Not much, but. It was the intent to keep the neighborhood pretty much like it is. It's a historic neighborhood. To say this house isn't historic, uh, means you're born in a different world than I am. There's a house on Second North and Fifth West that's approximately the same design. And it's been restored. It's on the national register. You'll probably drive by it and say, whoa, cute old house. This has got the potential of being just as cute. It's been neglected for at least four years. And uh, the reason that had two services in there, because it was a duplex, used as a duplex. With the encouragement of the city some years ago, because we needed more housing. But to take, to take a conservation zone is just a step to whatever everybody wants, which is what our, we heard hearsay. It's hard to find the old records on that. We heard her hearsay about that, and at least from a Provo resident. Uh, that, oh no, this is just transition. Well, we're in transition a lot. But our, our expressed and desire for this area was to keep it historic. Now, there's four other houses right in this little area that are the same age, that have been restored, that are cared for. And uh, and that doesn't go, well, if you want to count two blocks down, there's probably 10. So this is not unusual to have an old house in this neighborhood.
So you object then to just the concept of raising the existing home?
I do.
Thinking it was something else, just to.
I, I think that the idea, let me read my, I've tried to write stuff down, but I can't read because I'm old.
We're gonna ask you to summarize fairly quick if you can.
We live here and chose to live here on small lots in small houses for, for the nature of the neighborhood. You know, I was just talking to the, the ombudsman, she lives in Salem. Two acres, she owns two acres. For less than we could buy a house for in Provo. So we chose to live here because of the city, the nature of the neighborhood, the environment of the neighborhood and the history. Uh, several of my neighbors have approached me and said, what does conservation neighborhood mean? And they own old houses just like I do. Uh, the other thing is, I'm glad you brought up the garbage can. I asked the planner about that. He said, we don't care. It isn't on our requirement list to where the garbage goes. I thought that was a pretty short answer.
Sam, I'm gonna interrupt you for just a second. Can we go one extra minute on the clock? Give him another minute? Whoever's running that for us, that'd be helpful. We're gonna give you some extra time here. But ask you to, to summarize here in a minute if you can.
And if I could ask one quick question?
It's all right. I'm used to getting cut off. On our neighborhood meeting that was run by the city council lady, and I applaud her for her work. We, we got chopped off just like we didn't exist. And I was very sad about that. And the other people listening, it wasn't just me, it was, I was sitting there trying to stay out of it. You wouldn't believe that. Garbage cans, max number of tenants, uh, simple, single family, all things that were measured. And uh. You know, across the street, there's condos and they're all, almost all of them are owner occupied. The, the notice we got was for six units. That was the intent of this developer at first. And our, our planning department told them, guys. And our planning department told them, guys, you can't do that. That was the intent, is to put as many units in there as you can and optimize the use of the resources, the money, from somebody that doesn't live with it. I live 100 feet from this, and I probably said enough. But I am concerned, if it was a duplex going in, if somebody was cleaning it up and adding in a cissery apartment in the back, great. But to tear it down, build as much as you can get on that property and still get your car in and out, that's a bit of a stretch. And I... But it seems to be our program. Hey, thank you, and thank you for your service here. I appreciate every one of you. And even if I don't... I tried not to swear in the meeting. It doesn't always work.
Thank you. Do you mind sticking with us for just a minute? Did you have a question for us?
Excuse me? I had this one question, and you actually just answered it. Would you be okay if it was torn down, but a single-family or a duplex went in there? You pretty well answered that.
Tearing down the old house is sad. I've restored five houses in historic neighborhoods.
Thank you.
And... But like you says, it has a furnace that was like the furnace in my house when I moved in. Whoopie, you do a furnace, man! And the electrical...
I guess my thought is, to restore some houses, going to like restoring an old Camaro, if you replace the seats and the engine and the transmission and the suspension and the interior and all you've kept is the shell, have you really restored the car? Because 90% of it's new.
It's kind of like driving a teenager to college. And you start when they're little. Appreciate every one of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Commissioners, any discussion from here? Anything?
I just want to say, I appreciate Mr. Owen voicing his concerns. I know he went a little long. But I mean, I think some of us share those same concerns. We all share those same concerns. I don't like the idea of tearing down a home from 1890 or 1900. It's... There's a sense of loss, but I'm going to speak a little bit on behalf of the... The project is... I don't think the project was so in disrepair, or the home property was so in disrepair just in the last five years. This is years of over... of a dilapidated property. And then another thing I do want to say, our director of Development Services, he is... He does live here in Provo. And the city staff, they care deeply about Provo. I just wanted to make that clear. Thanks.
Appreciate that. Commissioner Henry?
I've got a lot to say. This is probably the one project that I read through the day we got the email, and it's kept me awake with so many questions and so many back and forths because there are housing shortages, and so we do need more housing. Taking one, making it four, that's good. But as I've studied a lot lately, mostly because I don't sleep well thinking about these things. And as I've thought about... I've done a huge dive the last few months about what causes decline because decline, to me, is the number-one issue that brings in all the undesirable characteristics that we have. And take a flock of penguins and put them in the desert, their populations are going to decline because their ecosystem isn't right. And so I've tried to apply that to housing. And in this particular project, if these townhomes were down on John H. DeVal's property and they were rear-loaded with an alleyway, we'd have a very different conversation. But the fact that this is mid-block and the townhomes are turned and they're not facing the street... Townhomes have an ecosystem that they thrive in, and people will fix them up and keep them well just naturally without any input. But when you start taking away some of the ecosystem elements, the more you do that, the more decline is going to win out in the end. As I look at this, the east side, so many times, it'll look great on day one. A shrub's going to die. It won't be replaced because nobody's ever there. Eventually, all the shrubs could die. Irrigation gets shut off on the weekend. Somebody didn't know, turns some valves. Half the shrubs die. They don't get replaced. That parking lot... Well, let me go another direction now. So in these projects, there are... There are things that are both... Let's see, how do I say this? I had this all thought out. The pros and cons, I always weigh with how many people are going to benefit or detract and for how long. Now, for this developer to go from one home to four, very good, but that short term for him, he won't be here. To me, that's kind of a lower priority. As I think about the human experience of this place, it's kind of dismal, in my opinion. Walking down a 20-foot asphalt driveway to get to the front door of someone's house is not an exciting experience. As a homeowner, coming home every day, backing in and out of those driveways, I mean, it is 20 feet, but again, you get a longer vehicle. If somebody's driving a Suburban, that's still a tight way to back in and out. And as well as that parking lot at the bottom, it's a three-point turn out of practically every parking stall down there. And that's just one more little piece. And there's no major glaring issue on this project. It feels like it's a bunch of little ones that don't jive with me, that I think are a struggle, that over time, I feel like this project is going to need so much life support to keep it alive, that decline is eventually going to win out. And so as we look at time, I just really struggle with seeing this mid-block. Then again, the RC zone. I don't remember real clear now, but it was said that the RC zone was put in place because people were taking one home and converting them into four. That's exactly what we're doing here. If that was one of the reasons we put RC zone in place, now I feel like we're going against one of those tenants that founded that RC zone. I had several other things. I don't remember them now. I'm not remembering very well these days.
Can I throw out some questions? Sorry.
Well, let me just finish up. I feel... So now I thought, what can we offer the developer? What is right? And the one thing I felt was, and this turns the developer from a profiteer into a philanthropist, but to tear down the home, build a nice new home, to show some regeneration, some revitalization in the neighborhood that gets the other owners going, oh, maybe this neighborhood isn't in decline. Maybe this neighborhood is coming better. With a detached ADU, I think I would have a very different opinion. I did drive by today, and we could not park on the street, the entire block. We tried to pull over in front of it, couldn't, drove down to the end of the street, not a single parking lot. We ended up pulling over and blocking the entrance to the condos across the street so I could have a minute to really look at the property, just get my feelings on it. But there was zero parking at 4:00 this afternoon. So parking is going to be an issue. I brought up the issue of the garages. It's so hard. We want people to park in their garages, but they don't. And I know we count that as one parking stall. I feel like we should count that as half a parking stall when we do parking counts because we still don't know what size that is. But I've seen, you know, 10-foot-wide parking garages, single garages. You can barely get the door open with scraping the mirror down the other side of the garage. Nobody parks in those. And so we do have a parking problem on the street. This program has the possibility of making it worse. But what do you do with it? The blocks were developed a long time ago. It's a very deep block. I didn't have a lot of solutions, but I just don't feel like this is the right thing for this neighborhood, given the zone, given the middle of the block. Like I said, again, if it was down on John H. DeVal's, facing the street, rear-loaded, that's a totally different conversation. But I've said a lot here. We'll go ahead and... Back to you, Chairman.
I might hold my thought. I appreciate that. Do you have something?
I mean, not particularly novel, but I just have been looking at it, trying to find a way to make it work. And I do wonder if there's a way, instead of having four houses right in a row, to separate it into two duplexes on the same property, moving the parking from that scary back corner, kind of distributing it between the two, maybe having... Rearranging for a little bit more open space available. I don't know. But I agree. I still do think the parking at the back just kind of makes it not flow very well. And if we're trying to get people to stay long-term, like these little things, like not having a good parking situation, having trash be a pain. And I actually did live in an apartment complex where we had the narrow strip behind the apartments, and we had a lot of unwelcome guests back there. So like... And I think I mentioned before that that is something that I'm less than happy about. And the more I think about it, the more I'm like, that wasn't a great situation.
Actually, it was a nice improvement.
Yeah.
Maybe.
It's not a great...
Maybe.
But either... Over what it is.
Fewer police chases through your back window.
Might have... Yeah, I... Perspective on whether you'd ever want people back there for any purpose.
Right.
You know, so that... But I'm where I feel like you two are. And I guess for me, I'm inclined to think that the home needs to be replaced, that there needs to be something new there, and that new construction and new investment there potentially can be really, really good for the neighborhood. I really, really like the idea of being every bit as careful about making sure that what happens here is the right thing for the neighborhood as we are sometimes when we talk about other neighborhoods and what happens there. So that's kind of the premise that I'm working from now. And I appreciated what Mr. Henry said. I do think, for me, it's a number of different things that individually, they're not deal breakers, but kind of collectively, it sort of make me wonder. And to that end, I don't necessarily have a solution. I will say this, that truly, a couple of really significant considerations for me are the things that happen to the south. So for example, the idea of trying... I like the idea of trying to maybe split up. I mean, conceivably, maybe even it's kind of a pocket neighborhood kind of concept. And you've got multiple individual homes there that all could really, in one way, kind of fit in with the character of the neighborhood and that kind of a thing.
Maybe drop to three instead of four.
Maybe something like that, but I don't think that, for example, having living space further to the south where you're closer to towing yard and what's going on to the south. So I like, from that perspective, the idea of the parking where it is, even though, for other reasons, it's not ideal. And at the same time, the parking's not out in front next to the street, which we pretty much never want to see. So I'm generally pretty decisive and can pretty quickly zero in on what I think should happen. And I'm not quite there yet here. But generally speaking, I like the concept. I do. I think that allowing for more dwellings on the property than what exists today, generally that is what it takes to get new investment and that kind of thing.
Right.
But I don't know exactly what might be best in that regard.
Just one other quick thought. I've worked with several people that took a historic building that had multiple additions, ripped the bad additions off, renovated the original 1890 parcel, and then connected it to a proper addition. We did a schoolhouse project in Holiday. Turned out beautifully. Preserved this old schoolhouse. They made it the office for the home with a breezeway connected to a beautiful home next to it. I don't know if this home still... I'm debating whether this home is even worth saving. I struggle with that. But again, that turns the developer from profiteer to philanthropist because they were never going to get back what they put into that renovation. So it does shift the type of person that would actually do that.
And just for me, I think location matters. For example, if this were on, let's say, Center Street.
Definitely.
Then it would be a lot harder for me to see that old structure come down and to be replaced with something contemporary here. I don't have the same... The context is just different.
Right. And where it's not even on the historical register yet. Clearly, nobody else has seen historical significance in preservation.
Commissioner Jensen, and I see you sidetracked. Anybody else? Thoughts, ideas?
So I appreciate this other way of looking at things, but I can't help but go back to, A, the intent of the RC zone, which can be interpreted differently, obviously, and B, the location of this property. It is completely surrounded on the backside by commercial manufacturing-type uses. And I feel like having a little higher density on the back of that lot is a great buffer use of the land. To point A, the purpose of the RC zone was to hold things so that they didn't get completely razed and have giant out-of-control projects to conserve a neighborhood, is my understanding. And having something that, with the development agreement ideas that we've tossed around, would lean towards being more owner-occupied. And that was something too in the Mazor neighborhood plan. They want owner-occupied. And so if the single-family intent is what we're going for, maybe it's not that far off considering its location. I was thinking earlier, and Mr. Larson just reminded me about a project that was approved in a residential conservation zone. I think it was a little over a year ago, just south of here. It was a long lot like this where it had a historic, kind of non-iconic home facing the street. And the owner of that lot, I think, had built a house next to it that was nice. And then he was going to develop similar architecture for three lots. So he has three structures that were on this lot, if I remember correctly. They each had a parking pad next to the driveway, and then they had a single-car garage. But the architecture went with the feel of the neighborhood. Now granted, this section of Provo has a little more architectural flair to it than I feel like the one we're looking at here, where it's just kind of small, box houses. But I feel like this meets a similar intent where someone's trying to say, I'm not trying to destroy the flair of your neighborhood. I'm trying to improve it, but this house isn't working. And it's way more expensive to fix a non-significantly historic house than it is to rebuild a new one, like that other project that we did over a year ago, where the architecture reflects that historic vibe and still enables some development to come into the neighborhood that will encourage owner occupancy, but use the land that's available the way it's been divided. So that was a lot of words that weren't supposed to take that long to say. But those are my two thoughts, was the intent of the RC zone and the location of this surrounded by all of these manufacturing uses that aren't really ideal.
Yeah, once again, Commissioner Jensen reinforced my indecisiveness on this one. This is not... This isn't an F. This, I think, for a lot of reasons, makes a lot of sense. It really does. I'm just looking now at First East, from what I'm guessing is, yeah, Fifth South down to Sixth South. This is not a residential situation, not at all. And I know if you look on the other side, going further to the east, it's the same way. I will say this too, and I don't want to go off forever, but as a term of art, one of the worst things that's ever been created is the idea of single-family attached. That is not a Provo city term, and it's used with specific meaning universally in landy's planning. But I completely appreciate... Like, normal people don't consider this to be a single-family, right? Type of housing arrangement, not at all, but the phraseology is what it is, so...
Again, as I look at it, because of the industrial use... Again, as I look at it, because of the industrial uses, I mean, the three houses to the east have a wrecking yard in their backyard, but their houses are so far away from it, probably not that big of a deal, which I go back again to staying with the character of the neighborhood, having one unit on the lot with maybe a an accessory dwelling unit, which I don't even know if those are allowed in this zone. They are, okay. With an accessory dwelling unit to help offset the renovation costs, uh, is that the highest and best use for this particular parcel? As much as we need housing, I don't want to use that as an excuse to do something that in twenty years, another planning commission is going to be like, who approved this? You know, so just thinking in the longest term, is this personally, as the plan stands tonight, I don't feel like the public experience is going to keep people living there long term and prevent decline. I really don't see it. It's not a comfortable people place.
You bring you bring out a good point too, that this is only point four acres.
Yeah.
So if you if you have a quarter acre lot, that's only slightly smaller than this.
And maybe just kind of, kind of my follow up. I I don't think this neighborhood necessarily needs more housing, but quality investment in the neighborhood definitely could have a really positive effect. So new construction and that type of thing, I think, could be beneficial. Uh, I'm gonna get a little out of my comfort zone and just maybe suggest a couple of things. Um, having just kind of taken a trip on Google Earth down Fifth South, it's really common, I I said something to the effect earlier about uh, porches. It's really common for for homes along the street to have big porches with some space, different things like that, which I think that does a lot of things. Um, from maybe like a neighborhood integration or compatibility kind of perspective.
Right.
I'm not trying to oversimplify anything's relative to to maybe changes that could be made here and that type of a thing, but um, kind of going back to just the idea that I think that east facing elevation really, really is plain, but also feel like that's maybe not the best place to spend a lot of money because it's kind of obscure as long as the single family homes next to it. It's really quite obscure, except maybe for them, but having maybe more done with the the street facing elevation, making you know, maybe a substantial kind of a porch, bigger covering, different columns, maybe making that some some usable space even sticking out into the setback, that kind of a thing. Um, so in other words, maybe uh, improving the street facing elevation. I really like the idea of designating something by way of a kind of an onsite pedestrian route um, down as part of that twenty feet, using concrete instead of asphalt. Um, I think that this actually is a project that has two parking spaces per unit, practically speaking, because of what most of the time does happen to garages. Um, and two is an upgrade over some of the things that we've seen. And then I'm not sure that that this has to be for homes either. Throw that out there. I think that's all that I have in an effort to try to be constructive. I'm not sure what more to say myself. I don't know if staff, anybody has any, any things that maybe you'd suggest that we consider as
Mr. Chair, I just had a question pop in my head for staff. Right here, we have a pretty interesting interface between single family homes and industrial uses. Is there any long range thoughts that one may move one way or the other, or are we just going to hold the line here and? And
The uh, the neighborhood plan actually calls for the for mixed use here, not uh, well,
Oh, interesting.
mixed use on the south end where we you see those industrial heavy commercial uses there. The long range plan is calling for mixed use residential, commercial type of situation.
Really? Love that.
Yeah.
So that would, that would improve these homes over what's there now.
Right. You can, you can see that runs all the way along Sixth South uh, for several, for four blocks, so.
Okay. Intriguing.
Yeah. That's why we thought this was, yeah, we think it's a good transitional use is as you see more single family homes kind of to the uh, again, this is the map of kind of where existing single family homes are. We thought this was a good transitional use into, you know, from that industrial, hopefully mixed use residential someday, but uh, kind of tran- transitioning, transitioning from the attached single family or town homes into the more uh, the heavier single family detached area of the Mazor neighborhood.
Commissioner Jensen.
Also, as we look at this map, note that the property directly across from the one we're talking about is the twenty-two
Yeah.
townhomes. And I know those are condominiums, owner occupied, but those look like apartments to me. There's nothing architecturally lovely about them and
There's not.
um, it's not something that screams, I want to own a single family neighborhood across from this parking lot. So not that we should encourage things to take a step down simply because they have undesirable neighbors, but we're not talking about, dude, the last one, that was a better view.
Yeah.
Like, this is what we're talking about really small nondescript houses and we're talking about a a larger home that will look better than what's currently there. So I I know it sounds like I'm trying to change your mind. I just I'm trying to think out loud too, so.
Mr. Rikyaga.
Yeah, um, I am very empathetic with finding out that the property you bought is a very expensive lot with basically a useless piece of um, old um, masonry that's going to fall down in the next earthquake. Um, and so I I think this needs to, I I can't see any real way to save the existing structure um, without a significant amount of money. So I I think it's going to have to be replaced. Um, how that gets replaced, uh, like many of you, I've got mixed thoughts. I am okay with this four unit, um, especially if it is subdivided and sold as individual proper, as basically some sort of a townhome or type of a situation. I am concerned about the property maintenance. I think that that is a an important part of keeping this in a nice prop- um, to be something that is desirable. And I don't know how to make sure that happens because that area behind could be a really scary thing. Um, if it's not properly maintained, if it's not lit, if it's yeah, I've been places that are issues. So that, that's probably my biggest concern is the maintenance, the lighting, um, the external, making sure that this stays the kind of place that a young family would want to be rather than turning into um, sort and sort of a dump.
I really appreciate that concern. I think everybody, right, that that's fundamental to improving the neighborhood. I'm fairly comfortable with how I would guess that it would work with a owners association of some kind, some shared maintenance and that type of a thing. I might even say that uh, there's a greater likelihood that the property is going to be well cared for with four homes there than if there's just one because of usually how the maintenance has performed and there's a shared responsibility and that type of a thing. I don't think there's a guarantee and I don't know what Provo might have by way of uh, enforcement mechanisms and that kind of a thing, but I I think that probably is something that that does take care of itself.
Uh, yeah, a homeowners association would uh, certainly help out in in those regards. As far as a a requirement for such, I I am, Bill might be able to correct me on that, but I I'm trying to um, and David, I don't know if you know either, but uh, a requirement for a homeowners association, I'm not a aware of of such for a development of this type.
There's common space that would have to be maintained. There are Yeah. Should be some collection mechanism for fees. Somebody would have to manage, you know, the different entities that would take care of landscaping, something mentioned, you know, snow removal, some different things like that, that I know sometimes smaller projects struggle with that more than obviously bigger ones where there's more need, but please, Mr. Jensen.
I keep going back to the idea that Ally um, suggested of having for having the units be split. And if I'm, if I'm going back to this project I referred to that was south of the city center where they had three houses on this long parcel. Um, well, let's pretend that there were four and we just divided every one of these uh, shared wall units up and made four sixteen hundred square foot homes that all had a street, you know, that was essentially a
Sure driveway.
private driveway, but then they could each have a pad next to their driveway for the the second parking spot or two pads, one on each side. If we're willing to give them this much asphalt, let's give it to them in their driveway and they could each have a fence at the property line that gave them that ten foot backyard as their own space. So it now is their land to own, their land to take care of. You don't have to trust a flimsy HOA to to get the work done. And you've got four distinct lots that somebody can build on and care for and call their own. Does that make it a little bit more enticing? Even three of them instead of four of them on the on the land that's there where they can have their own walls, but we're talking about a small lot that's really truly a single family.
Yeah, and that scenario, people usually put a fence between the units, which would then make more difficult using that back area for undesirable, attractive, undesirable people.
So that that accomplishes two purposes. It it, oh, three, actually. It it encourages owner occupancy. It takes care of the the maintenance of the land and then it it necessitates the breakup that you can do with a fencing that gives you your own backyard to take care of. For safety reasons, there aren't vagrants passing through the alleyway. Anyway. Which would hopefully still give, I mean, it would probably cost more because we're building three extra walls that aren't accounted for. But they're double walls anyway, so we're just talking about facade costs, hopefully, and it gives everyone their own parking spot to take care of, their own landscaping to take care of, less less likelihood that the whole thing will fall into disarray. You get the same units out of it with a little more security in the end product. I don't know if somebody wants to be in the the one in the furthest back. Maybe that is ideal, but those are some ideas based on what we've been talking about.
Staff would like to recommend the continuance of this, uh, that you consider a continuance of this item and that uh, we'd be able to have some time to talk to the applicant to to pursue some of these ideas. I I think there's some merit to uh, some perhaps detached uh, homes on this property. It might, might even be a better situation for the applicant, actually.
I think that's a great suggestion. Um, I'm inclined maybe to take a couple of minutes if you have an initial reaction to what we're saying. Um, I think I'd I'd appreciate, so uh, for a lot of different reasons that go back a long time, I'm really inclined to think that if if you'd be willing to explore the idea of building individual structures, individual homes on the property.
With a few ideas, Dave. And I appreciate, I appreciate your concerns, Brian. Um, I do disagree with a few of them, but I appreciate them. Kind of to your point, Lisa, I do think that, and this is to you too, Ally, instead of maybe having a pathway there, I would, I would be and I think it might be nice if we did fence those off and built like a patio in the back that they could put a trash can in and we just add a door on that back facade. Um, I think that would address the trash issue and give, it wouldn't be a a big patio, but we do have what, ten feet on that side? Um, so I would be okay with that and that's what I do for a living, so that wouldn't be be hard to do. Something that all of you have kind of addressed, um, is making them single family homeowners. My wife would appreciate that because she's a real estate agent and she would love not to have an investment property, but be more, she would love to sell them. So that's, that's easy and that's something we could do. But also talking to Brandon, we do have, we do have an additional, what, five feet? We could push that building towards, towards five hundred south, which would alleviate some of that, that parking issue on that corner. So I guess what I would propose to you guys, and I don't think it would be that hard, would be to add a door on the the east facing side, fence off each of those units, build a small patio so that they had some kind of living, outdoor living area and fence those off so that we're not having kids or whoever else go back there. You know, institute that, that sidewalk out front that can double as that uh, you know, driveway for for emergency use vehicles, push the property five feet forward and alleviate um, that corner congestion. Brian, to your point, just really quick, it's I work with a lot of builders and I've had, I've, I've been working on this project for two and a half years and so I have thrown a lot of things at the wall to see what would stick and what, what would work. This home is hard and and even just selling it the way it is, is hard. And we'd have to sell it at a discount and we'd have to sell it probably to someone that didn't have the money to fix it up. So if we don't and I'm, I'm really trying not to make it sound about money, but if we don't like for me to put nine hundred or nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars into to doing a project, it has, it has to make sense, right? Or else we just sell it and we sell it to someone that is going to leave it the way it is. And to Sam's point, I'm not trying to it's not that I haven't wanted to do something on it, but it's like, where do you start? And I don't want to put money into fixing the roof when it's got a foundation problem. And and it's really difficult to say, where do you start when?
I, I do agree. And having not been in the home, uh, that was kind of my, my Camaro comment. If you're going to replace ninety percent of the house, you're not preserving anything. And so I I do agree that there's not a lot there to preserve in my mind.
Yeah. Well, and it's hard to like, if you start here, the problem is then you got to address ten other things and it's, it's like, I
Of course. Yes. No, I I fully agree with that as well as uh, in in redevelopment, uh, there, there are several schools of thought out there. The one that I'm going to address with you is Strong Towns, that when you redevelop, sometimes you have to go up a step in the development intensity to make it worth the cost. And I'm fully aware of that, that sometimes a single house has to go to a duplex to give the incentive to do the, the up zoning, as they call it, in the first place. And so that's where I'm thinking an ADU duplex. Uh, because obviously I have thought about your angle as well. I work with developers and builders all day long. And there, there needs to be some give and take. I do agree with that.
Yeah.
Um, I guess real quick while I have your ear to to come, uh, Mr. Uh,
Dave.
Chairman Anderson's comment about the front facade, I think the biggest thing for me as a designer, the proportions are off. Uh, there needs to be some, some adjustment of the proportions. You've got this giant hat of a roof and this little teeny roof over the door and it it just, it feels like a big hat on a little kid, which is cute for kids. It's not cute for housing.
Yeah.
And then with that driveway, there are ways that can be addressed with like structural soil where you can actually do lawn for part of it that still meets fire code. But it also aesthetically makes it better. It gives the people who live there every day somewhere to go sit on a lawn where the fire truck hopefully never needs to use that driveway. That's the hope. We make it so they need it if they have to. Hopefully they never do. But there are ways to address that driveway, like, like Dave said, with putting concrete that makes it look like a pedestrian putting concrete that makes it look like a pedestrian sidewalk. All these things are psychological that we don't even realize we do. But when we walk down a driveway as a pedestrian, we feel like an imposter and we feel like we're out of our element. That's not a people space. So we don't generally like going there. Now, we don't notice this consciously. But there are a lot of little things subconsciously that over time will make people say, you know what? I don't want to stay here. I want to move up. So anyway, any others?
Mr. Jones.
I think Jones was.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, um, I just will say, I think that you've gotten a good impression of where how we feel about this property overall. Um, I know that there have been different suggestions about how to break it up and I personally am still fine with connected walls in some way. One thing that I think is worth just saying straightforwardly is I think a lot of us would be okay with a creative approach to this as long as it fit in well with the atmosphere of the community like um, a row of townhomes is kind of what you'd expect, but there are a lot of recent approaches that maybe are a bit more unconventional, but still very functional people spaces that allow for that kind of neighborhood feel in this strange environment. So I mean, I think you'll have a lot of time to think this through if we possibly continue it to another section, but I I think a creative approach would be interesting to several of us on the commission. So.
Thank you, Mr. Kiaga.
This is just a really, really quick comment. I like the idea of having back patios with doors. Um, in terms of getting the trash from there to the street, there just you'd have to go through your house, um, which is so you're you'd have to split things up in some way if you were going to have that.
That wouldn't work so well. I'd have to look at the floor plan a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, well, forget that part.
Yeah, the yard idea is great. Um, and I I do like the idea of maybe continuing this for a little while so that um you and Brandon can talk about some options and see, I know you put a lot of time into this and want to move forward, but we do want to get it right.
Thank you. And thank you. I really appreciate you talking things through with this tonight. Um, I'm not sure exactly what we're gonna do next, but now is I think maybe when we find that out, if somebody wants to make a motion. Commissioner Jensen.
Um, I just wanted to list the changes that we had discussed so that if a motion for continuance is made, staff and um and applicant know what we're looking forward to come back with.
I would appreciate that.
Okay, so the first one I've written down is the discussion about the variation in materials or colors and or tall skinny trees on the east side, just to break up the long facade if you decided to have it all be connected. The second one was the sidewalk material along with the asphalt to make the 20 foot road more pedestrian friendly. And other ideas have been added to that. The third one was um lights for the parking lots for safety issues if you decided to keep it in the back. And the fourth one was subdividing the land to facilitate and encourage owner occupancy. And the next one was fencing off the individual parcels for maintenance um or even breaking them into four units entirely. And then um the last one was architecture that blends in historically on the facade. So it also on scale, the scale and the style of architecture. Did I miss something significant that we didn't that doesn't crumble crumble into all of those? Can anyone think of something else that?
I think that's, I mean, the minor one for me is maybe maybe shifting the building a little bit to the north to take care of the parking issue. Just the
If you kept it as one big.
Navigating kind of the parking lot.
And then the possibly a porch on the street facing porch that would be more of a function.
On that north side. Yeah, so something um architecture that blends in historically with a porch, I guess that falls into that same category. Okay. That was all I thought that just.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So I've been instructed that nobody to my right is gonna make a motion on this. Is there anybody or on the other side that?
I don't think you want my motion.
This is gonna be an easy one. It's an easy one.
Okay, you might have to talk me through this one. Um, I move to continue items two and three. Uh, Chris and Karen. I don't remember how to say it.
Kneution.
Kneution. Um, request project plan approval for four townhome units located at 152 East 500 South. Um, to do we have a specific date that we want to continue that to?
I would prefer that we don't, just maybe earliest fun practical date.
Okay. I, okay, I moved to continue those items to the most convenient date.
Wonderful. We have a motion to continue items one and two. Two and three? Can you have a second?
Do we need to read item three? And since its wording is a little different?
Um.
Or does or is it understood?
I think we're covered. Just continue.
I would second.
Okay, thank you. So it's Commissioner Jones with the motion, Commissioner Kiaga.
Um, would you want to add a um recommendation or a condition that the applicant discuss the issues that we have brought up with the city staff?
Yes, I would like to amend that motion to include the condition that the applicant discuss the aforementioned changes with city staff.
Wonderful, thank you.
And I second again.
Good. Second on the amendment. Great. Once again, Commissioner Kiaga, any discussion on the motion?
That was beautiful.
Likewise, I I agree. That was beautiful. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll start with Commissioner Jensen.
Hi.
Jensen.
Hi.
Commissioner Kiaga.
Hi.
I, Commissioner Henry.
Hi.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Mr. Jones.
Hi.
Ananmas. Honestly, thank you. We appreciate this. I I don't think you're far off, but I do like some of the options that you know, if they grew legs and we were looking at um maybe just a a different type of housing even there if that if you found benefit in that, I I'd I'd love to see how that could maybe work.
No, sounds good.
Okay.
And Brandon, are you fa- familiar with the um development that Lisa was discussing?
Yes.
I I would definitely show him what is planned there and see if that brings up any ideas.
It will inspire you. I I thought it was a fantastic idea and I haven't seen it built so that if it turned out as great as the proposal was, it's a great idea.
It it's still.
But it's happening.
Yeah, it's.
It's visible.
Thank you, Mr. Kneution. That was good.
I'll make my second motion. I move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.